This is the regular school board meeting for Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, June 11th, 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, it appears there are a few, a couple items in the table file, anyway.
Yes, and mainly, again, what we have tonight is, as we will have over the next, again, probably another month, would be additional personnel items in terms of appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, some advancement of licensed staff to tenure status, and those items would need to be addressed as part of the consent agenda.
Great, we will add those to the consent agenda as we move forward unless there's any concern. All right, this is now an opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of this school district to address the board. Is there anyone here from the community who wishes to address this? No? All right. If you move on to approval of the minutes, board members, you should have in your packet the minutes from our last school board meeting on May Tuesday, May 29th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved by Ann, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcement and recognition.
Yes, we have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, through funding from HCI, the Mayor's Task Force on Youth Drugs Tobacco and Alcohol Use, the Christine Hause Memorial Fund, and the Fran Cedestrom Memorial Fund, we're going to be sending Bubba Sullivan and Leah San, as well as students Abby Stetz and Taylor Friarmouth to Lake Placid for the Life of an Athlete, which is pure performance training, if you remember that, we brought in a couple of years ago. Main thrust is youth components stressing the importance of students in the school taking ownership and driving the program. Bubba, Leah, Abby, and Taylor will be in Lake Placid from June 14th to the 17th. Also this summer, in July, on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th, John Underwood, who, if you remember, came and spoke both to our kids and our parents, will be in Bloomington and will be presenting. John has also been to Northfield a number of times as the creator and driving force of the Life of the Athlete program, and again, we'll hope to have people be able to go to see him as well. Also, would like to congratulate 22 honors art students from Northfield High School who had their exhibit of their art in Off the Charts at the Art Skilled Gallery, and that is currently on display and will be on display through June the 16th. So those are the two announcements I have for this evening.
Board members, anyone else have something to add? Julie?
I just wanted to thank Roger Jennings and Paul Beck for the wonderful fifth grade band concert on Bridge Square the night before the last day of school. They were out there marching and playing a little hearts out, and it's just such a wonderful way to showcase our music program because the community is there that might not be able to get to one of the other music programs that we often host, but being on Bridge Square on a beautiful night, there was lots of people there to listen to them, so congrats for their performance. And to Paul Beck and Roger Jennings because that is no easy thing to pull off. And it was very fun.
Excellent. Anyone else? All right. We have no items for discussion or reports tonight, so we are moving on to our items for individual action. And the first item, board members, you will have the 2012-2013 proposed budget, and you received a very thorough report from Stephanie, which contains all the reports that she's been doing over the last four months.
And so really, I think at this time, you have had a chance to hear about all of the different fund balances and funds, and our proposed revenues and expenditures for the coming year. Those are also listed in your board memorandum in terms of the total revenues and expenditures for each of the funds. We'd offer an opportunity, if there are any additional questions that people have about any component of the budget, that we would try to get those answered, but at this point, given all of the opportunities that you've had, we're prepared to recommend the approval of the proposed 2012-13 budgets as presented for all funds. And again, we're, we are here basically to answer any questions you might have about any of the budget elements, anything in budget book. I'm sure that Stephanie, again, would be very willing to answer any questions you might have about any of the elements there. I personally feel this was very well laid out for you to be able to go through and take a look at. I think it gives you a really good sense of where we are in terms of all our budget areas, and again, I think it demonstrates the level of stewardship that we have provided through this year and the last number of years in terms of trying to create a budget that, where we live within our means, and we continue to maintain a strong fund balance, and we're prepared to move forward into the next year with the dollars we need to provide all the programs that we want to provide for kids.
Thanks, Dan. Time? Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. I wrote to Stephanie earlier about this. I think that this, this packet is great because of how well it delineates the different parts of the budget so that it helps all of us answer any questions that community members might have, and have, we have these discrete units very clearly laid out, so I really appreciate it.
So, board members, before we have any other discussion or questions, why don't we, I'd be looking for a motion on the table first?
So moved.
Moved by Julie?
Okay.
Seconded by Noel. So, any other comments, questions, Julie?
I just had a comment to further add to what Ann said. Stephanie, I really, really liked the narrative because it really very well explains all the different line items, and when I went back and drew all of the notes that I had taken, and you covered everything, only better, explaining it better and more thoroughly, and I agree, the narrative is just extremely valuable, and I thought if anyone really wanted to understand school funding and our district budget, they could read this and really understand it well. So, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I had one, and echoing what Ann said and Julie, I don't know, board members, if you noticed page 11 in particular, the direct instruction people and instructional support, and just seeing that 81.4%, that, I mean, I just think that's, you know, tremendous, and I really appreciate everybody in the district that, that looks out for our spending and really, you know, the fact that we can say that 81.4% of it is going directly to people in instruction is outstanding, so. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there are no other comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the 2012-2013 proposed budget? All funds, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, our next item for individual action is the transformational technology piece. Dr. Richardson, do you want to?
I, I would just share with you some general comments, and again, I know Matt would be very happy at any point to step up to the mic if you have any additional specific questions. I think, as you know, over the last several months, the district has been sharing with the board a vision of how we believe that mobile technology using tablets would be a strategy for really completely changing the face of teaching and learning in our district. And we did present at the last board meeting, Matt presented to you a very detailed kind of conceptual plan of how we would look at implementing this with the first year being the implementation with teachers, the idea of having staff, all having the equipment in place so that they would have a year to learn to use the equipment, the equipment well, that they would get, begin training beginning this summer with the tech boot camp, and then going on a weekly basis all through the year next year, at the same time, working with six different task forces who would be responsible for looking at all the specific components, things like what policies and procedures need to be in place, what kind of digital textbooks and digital materials are out there and available, what do we need in terms of making sure that our wireless network is in place to really do the work that we need to do? How do we continue to provide support and training for teachers as they prepare to roll this out? All of the kinds of pieces that we know we need to do to get staff ready to go. And then we shared with you that really the second step of the process would be the implementation of tablet technology on a one-to-one basis for our student body. We also said that crystal ball was a little less clear in terms of that second year because we know that in the last 18 to 20 months where we've had tablet technology really explode, we're already through three different versions of the technology. And so what, what we want to be able to do is before we make the significant expenditure for the student tablets, we want to make sure that we have checked and rechecked all of the pieces, but we've also given a chance for some of the districts that are basically a year ahead of us in terms of implementation, to check to see how things are moving for them, and also an opportunity for us to be able to come back and present to you a very, very clear plan for how we would sustainably fund these tablets, because I think the reality is, and the concern we have in some of the other districts that we've looked at, is that they have looked at trying to purchase with one-time funding, specific technology. And the problem with that is that's great in the first year, but two or three years down the road, when it's time to start cycling out and replacing that technology, we have to make sure that we have a plan that allows us to do that recycling, and also knowing that by using a lease strategy as opposed to purchase strategy, that means if the newest and greatest and best that might be out there and available three years from now is a very different technology than what we have, we aren't going to be bound or tied up with the fact that when we have all of this technology that we have purchased, that we now have to live with, whether it's the right stuff or not. I think that the thing that we also talk to you very strongly about is that in the last 18 months, we have really seen kind of the turning of the corner. We have moved from a situation where we had technology that the battery life was about three and a half to four hours, to where now we have battery life that will go an entire day. We have literally hundreds and thousands of apps that are now available for tablet technology, many of them are instructional. We have digital textbooks now available from all of the major textbooks, textbook providers, and we have the ability for staff to actually author units and/or texts that they can use to teach their particular courses. All of that didn't exist two years ago, and we really feel that we've reached that tipping point where it is time for us to move forward with that particular process, and so that's why we're bringing that to you tonight. But again, our sense is that we need to do the first piece because we know that if we don't bring all of our teachers onboard, we don't make sure that they have the adequate kinds of training with a device in hand that they can use for themselves and also use for the classes, we're not going to get the kind of implementation we want when we actually provide these devices to students. So we need to do that piece first. We also know that before we can come back to you, probably in January of next year, to really look at the final Phase Two proposal, we also know that we have to look at what's happening with hardware. We may actually see another version of the device, we may see a iPad Lite version, which may be a less costly version. There are all those other pieces that are there, and we want to make sure to take advantage of all those pieces. We also want to give staff a chance to actually select materials and apps and the other pieces that they're going to be using with students, the idea that they can use them first classroom-wide, and then the ability then for those kinds of apps, especially the digital textbooks, then to be loaded onto devices going forward. So tonight, really, what we're asking for is the approval, conceptually, of a two-part plan, and the specific approval of the dollars necessary to fund the purchase of, excuse, not the purchase, but the lease of the iPads, which is projected to be about $41,000 per year over the next three years, $41,000 in each of the next three years, and the fact that there will be additional dollars needed to provide the apps and the potential digital textbook materials, and also covers and other things to make sure that we have devices that are going to work. At the same time, we're working with a capital budget to upgrade any of the wireless components of our system to make sure that we have, help me, Matt, it's you have to have both coverage and density, right? And, and that's a key piece in that not only do you have to make sure that any place in any of the buildings you can connect, but also that when you have significant numbers of devices hitting the same particular node, that you have multiple radios on that node so that we don't end up having kids that get locked out or slowed down to where they can't use the device appropriately. And again, this will give us that year to get all of that infrastructure built and ready to go, to have the best planning to go forward. We feel that, that we have done our homework, and as you know, we've made several presentations, and Matt has made several presentations in the community to give people a chance to come in and to talk about and ask the questions. He's continuing to collect a list of all those questions and responses and answers to those pieces, and I think we have a strong contingent of our teaching staff that is ready to go with this and wants to really move forward, and I think we'll be committed not only to be adopters of the technology, but also willing to support and provide instruction and so on to other, other members of the staff that may be not as far along in the technology process. So that's really kind of where we are right now. We're basically saying, we're looking for, conceptually, the big picture, a support on the part of the board, but more specifically for Phase One, which is the purchase of the iPads for all of our teaching staff, and the other dollars necessary to basically make sure that we have all the related purchases for those iPads so that they can function and that teachers can learn to use them effectively before we make choices about how we want to move forward for kids.
Very good. So, board members, I know we've had some good discussion last meeting, and I imagine that people have comments or maybe even some additional questions. What I'd like to do is have a motion on the table and then comments and questions after that. So, just to clarify, the motion is really to approve Phase One, but also to consider conceptually the larger piece, because if we're having teachers investing in this phase, when we're doing so with the, the idea that conceptually, we think this, this is something to go forward with. So I'm looking for a motion on the table? Moved by John, seconded by Ann. All right. Questions, comments? Noel?
I was present for several presentations, not only at the board, but also in the community, and part of it was to not only learn about it, but also hear the community response. And it was, I thought the presentations, Matt, were just superb, and it, it, not only were they educational, but I think it made clear to the community there, it's pretty a transparent process that we're trying to do here, not without some financial impact, but I think it's very, very thoughtful, and I think the opportunity is excellent, and I think the timing is excellent. My certainly support.
John?
I just got a question again on, on the cost here, because my recollection of that 41,000 number is that is the number of licensed teaching staff times 379, is that?
Licensed teaching plus there's some additional individuals who are not in that category.
So really, that's not the cost each year for the next three years? That was the cost for three total years, isn't that?
No, it's three per, that's that 41,000 per year over three years.
So it's, it's, it's about $123,000 for
Correct.
The three years is the lease.
Okay, so then the cost-
I want you to pay it out at, at $41,000 a year.
Okay. So the cost per lease, and as I remember, we cost it, it was costed out at $379, which is basically the purchase price of the items, right?
Plus the $79 for the Apple Care, which is that additional piece in terms of the insurance, so to speak.
And then that is divided over the three-year life of the-
Correct. And the way the math gets a little goofy is because of the fact that it's a fair market value lease, so if you took that 300 and you multiplied it by that, you know, 458 or whatever it is, you're going to get a total that the lease doesn't actually add up to, because the people who buy that fair market value lease are betting that when we are done after three years, they can sell those devices to someone else for the balance between what the actual purchase cost was and what we paid, plus an additional profit. I had to go back and ask that question because when I did the math, as I mentioned the last time, it didn't quite work, but that's the way that the fair market value lease works, is that you don't actually pay the entirety of the purchase cost over three years because the companies that purchase the leases believe they're going to make some money on the backend with it.
So in reality, the cost is less than what we're talking about, somewhat less?
Well, the, this is, the actual cost is, factors in that lesser amount than the actual purchase price. So there's a calculation that they use, they give us a, a percentage essentially that we take, how much we are looking at purchasing, multiply by this lease rate factor, and that's what our annual cost is over the three-year period.
Okay, but our annual cost is
It's the 40-
Less than the purchase price?
Correct, absolutely.
Our total cost is less than the purchase price, huh?
Correct.
Annual cost is something in that range.
Yes, I, I learned a lot about fair market value leases in the last six to eight weeks here. Does that clarify, John, because it took me a while to get my, my arms around that one, too?
Okay, but we don't, I mean, the per-unit cost, we don't know the actual per-unit cost at the moment.
If we were to purchase the per-unit, if we were to buy it outright, it would be the 379 plus the $79, and we multiply that all, and I can't remember the, I didn't bring the lease fa, the rate factor with me tonight, but I could, I didn't divide that out to find, you know, what that would be, but it's 41, about 41,000 over the three-year period based upon the amount that we're purchasing, or leasing, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Julie?
So the fair market value lease is actually advantageous for us.
I, I personally believe that it is, and the reason is that, again, Dr. Richardson spoke about something that has been the goal of ours from the beginning, which is attempting to find a way to be sustainable. I've not, I think there's not, there's a handful of projects across the country out there that are, I think, sustainable. There's a lot where people have purchased them with just general dollars, and they've purchased them, and that's a great way to get started, but it's, I liken this to just like when you open a new school building. You've got capital money that has come in, and if you buy all the computers and those things when the school opens without planning for what's going to happen five years down the line, when you don't have that bond money, that one-time bond money, you're setting yourself up for failure five years down the line. So with the lease, we believe that that helps us get into a method where we can budget for it over time, and it's something that those devices go away at the end of that fair market value lease, and then we have the option to negotiate with any other company who would, would want to negotiate with us. I think that's a huge point that we can't emphasize enough, is it doesn't lock us into one vendor, and down the road, as this market even gets better, we can start to, really, I think, get some very competitive costs, which will be less than what they are today. Yes, Jeff?
So, I appreciate all your time that you're putting into this. What's the argument for the status quo? You know, in other words, doing nothing?
Could you help me understand?
I'm just saying not, not invest in technology and do what we're doing. I mean, you know, so.
Well, I think, if I were to, you want me to give the devil's advocate argument?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I think that if we were to look at the devil's advocate argument, that what we're doing is comfortable, what we're doing is essentially what we've done for the last 100 years, but we've been trying to get away from that for the last 20 to 30 years in terms of seeking new ways that we can provide information. I think that the argument for the status quo, because we enjoy, I, I personally do enjoy a, a feel of a good textbook, it's a, it's a good thing. However, I think that, as I've mentioned before, I think our key goal is to prepare kids for their future, not our past or present, and we know that kids are going to be consuming more and more information, or adults are going to be consuming more and more information digitally for themselves, as part of their jobs. The books in this library will not go away anytime soon. We've got 100 copies of Tom Sawyer. Tom Sawyer's been the same since Mark Twain wrote it, right? So these books will not go away, but the initial piece will be the things like the digital textbooks and those items, I think can engage learners in a way that, you know, our regular materials cannot. I guess I've been so ingrained in the, in the, this that, going back to the devil's advocate-
I, I know you have, you kind of skipped a loop there.
You're having a little fun with me, aren't you, Jeff?
Okay, I'm not. I, I like, I like a good argument and debate, I always like the pro and the con, and I know you put a lot of, you know, a lot of time into that. And then my other-
I, I think part of the con or pro is the idea of saying, if you're comfortable living with the same resource that is out of date when you bought it-
Right.
And is now seven years more out of date because that's how long you have to keep it before you can buy the next one, then keeping, maintaining the status quo is the right strategy. If, the idea, however, is that the amount of information is doubling every, and I'm trying to think now, is it 18 months?
Eighteen months, something like that. Probably even faster.
And, and, and especially when we look at social studies and science, things are changing every day, and you have the ability, in, in terms of the textbook world, to instead of having one textbook you live with that is out of date already, you now have a textbook that is updated on a regular basis every time new information becomes available, and it's always fresh and it's always new. That's a huge difference for kids. You have the availability of new apps available for kids to learn from, and in a variety of modes. So the student that's very comfortable reading textbook can read a textbook in the digital print, but if they need to hear it from a good lecturer explaining it, or if they need to see a drawing of it, or they need to see a three-dimensional explanation of it, none of those things are available in the current format that we have. And that's where we see the technology making a huge difference as we come forward, and really beginning to have us do some real serious thinking about changing the way we teach, because if you really think about, if you can get the best lecture in the world and you can get the, the best conceptual presentation in the world and present that to kids, then the teacher becomes not the presenter of knowledge, the sage on the stage, but they become the guide on the side. They become more like Socrates, they become the person whose job is to say, let's ask you the good question. Jeff, really show me that you know what you're talking about. Explain this concept to me, because you've heard it now, you've seen it, you had a chance to review the lecture, you know, five times last night in the digital format, you got a chance to practice it, you got a chance to email and talk to your friends about it. Now, Jeff, show me that you really know what's going on. Very different situation. Now, again, if you're the student that would be, would like to be able to sit in the back of the room and, and pretend the dog ate their homework, this may not be the, may not be the alternative that would be interesting to do.
Apple Care would cover a couple of those on a dog.
But the dog, yeah, the dog, homework eating will be covered at least twice.
I love the fact that we've connected the Socratic method to the transformational technology.
Well, it absolutely is, it, it, because right now, we still spend far, far too much time delivering information, and, as opposed to using all the resources that are now available to deliver information, and using the teacher's skill to really talk about, how do I, how do you show me what you know? Because, because again, it's that old thing about, you know, the, the difference in terms of learning between just trying to memorize information in a, in a resource versus having to basically teach it to your classmates, or teach it to your teacher, and explain to them that you really know how to do it. It's a whole different level of learning, and one we think will be very powerful.
And then on the other end of, I mentioned that, you know, in a year, you might have significant price drops, so you, you could buy, I mean, I'm saying, obviously, the minimum, minimizing the risk, obviously, is getting the teachers, you know, their units first, that's fine, and then adding, you know, what, what would you, would you give, if you get newer, better units, would you give the newer ones to the teachers, or would you give those to students, or is it all the same?
You know, I think that some of that depends upon what the new units look like. As we mentioned at the presentation the last time, that's a very real possib, actually, not even just a possibility, but a probability, and we'll make it, you know, we'll make it, we'll live with it in terms of, we, like I said, we love to have the same device for everybody, there's an inherent advantage to that, but we're also realists in the fact that at that time, it may not be the same device. My intent would be that we would do the new devices for students. I think we want, it's important that all the students have the same device, and, and all the teachers at a minimum, that would be, or waves of students, if we were to choose to break Phase Two into multiple smaller phases, you know, we're going to have some of that, too.
And I do think that the pads are, you know, moving forward the new standard for education, so just, it adds a large group or a government entity, it's just harder to get there, you know?
You know, and I think that probably since computers came into schools really in force in, in probably the late 1970s to early 1980s, we could have had that same discussion every spring. If we wait one more year, it will be cheaper, and that's true. We know that it will be cheaper, we know that it will be better next year, but then we're like the Brooklyn Dodgers and waiting till next year, until next year, and then.
Thanks, Steph. I think Ann- I think Ann was, had an item?
Yeah, it's done a little bit different now to look into the future and having heard your presentation kind of one and a half times. I really like this plan with the time for the teachers to have this whole year, and I think it's very wise that we're, during this year, we'll be analyzing how to send it out to the students. And I think that is really good thought process and experience for us to have in this first year, so thank you for
You know, that's-
... bringing out that kind of process.
Well, and I think that I really appreciate Noel's comments about the transparency of the process because, you know, that was something we heard loud and clear from our teaching staff in the building-level meetings that we did, and that really assisted in helping us solidify that that was the right way to go. So I really appreciate hearing that from both of you because I think that goes to show that we worked with lots of people during this process and that people's voices were heard. And I really appreciate all of the listening that you've done to me because, like, we know, we've talked a lot and might have set a new record for the presentation time, but thank you very much for being a part, you've been active participants in this process, and it's made the proposal that much better, so thank you.
Did you have another item, Noel?
I did, and I have a personal experience with it. I don't know if this necessarily would apply to the equipment that you're talking about, but we were a family there in Applebee's a couple of weeks ago, and my younger son, who's a bit of a wordsmith and enjoys words, was talking, and he used a word, and all of a sudden, the eleven-year-old grandson reached over and grabbed his dad's little phone, Googled in something, and found the definition of the word, and said, ah, now I know what you're talking about.
That quick. That's what we call just-in-time learning.
Just a marvelous little incident.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions?
So I just wanted to add, well, I had one question and I had one thing to add. So the one question was going back to the, we were talking about the three years and then being able to negotiate another contract.
Correct.
The students will be at a lag of a year, so we'll end up having, I assume that next year, that'll be part of what you'll be kind of looking at is how does that work with the sustainability?
And, you know, that at the end of the teacher, one of the options at the end of the first teacher lease, there are three options. We could send the devices back, we could renegotiate to lease in a different manner for an additional period of time, it wouldn't be in the fair market value anymore, it would probably be at a higher rate, or we could purchase the devices for the fair market value. So as we get through this, and if we get to that point and look and see, boy, it would be really advantageous to have the student, we could make some, that's what we've talked about, multiple decision points. So that would even provide another decision point after the students to look at, okay, and as Jeff has said, by then, who knows? I don't think he'll ever give them to us for free, but, you know.
Hope springs eternal.
Yes. I still believe that college might be free someday, but that's going the wrong direction right now, so.
Well, thank you, Matt. I would echo what the board members have said about the transparency and the community involvement. It was really nice to see people, and I understand I miss last Thursdays, but that you had a nice showing of people with questions and being able to roll out more information every time has been really helpful. I guess I look forward to next year and hearing, depending on what we decide as a board, of course, but I would echo what Ann said about kind of really the thoughtful approach and methodical, and we already had a pilot with thirty-five teachers and bringing it to all the instructional staff. And I was thinking about, I have another anecdote, too, is, you know, I, seventh grade had North and South Vietnam on the map when, you know, that had been, you know, three years gone, and then, you know, how many times the periodic table changed? So, but I think if it was just that and a really heavy backpack, we wouldn't be thinking about this. I think it's really what Dr. Richardson was saying about we have to do more for the students, we have to reduce the achievement gap, we have to look at differentiated instruction, and, you know, looking at this kind of rapid formative assessment has proven to be the most cost-effective way to reduce the achievement gap and increase our achievement. So I think the more we can do to look at that, and we have to look at it in different ways, I think that that's the right way to go, so. Are there any other comments, John?
I just have one, one more question. Is there, is there a possibility in there of an early termination for the lease if we decide that there's other equipment that better suits our needs without substantial costs, like maybe after a year or two, we could?
That is a fair question that I will, do not have the answer for. My sense is that we could buy out the lease, you know, at any time. I think that it would be cost prohibitive to do that, is my experience with previous leases. Usually, there's that kind of escape clause that you can do that. On this particular one, I don't have a very specific answer for you right now, but my sense is that there will be, and I see Stephanie nodding her head because that's typically how those leases work. But I could, I don't want to give you incorrect information, so my sense is probably, but it will be a question I can email the person right now and find out, but I probably won't get a response till tomorrow morning.
Right, well, I mean, obviously, if it means buying out the rest of the lease, that wouldn't be worth it, but if there were a way of, you know-
The only thing I could see is that, you know, the potential could be that you might be able to upgrade the lease.
Right.
So let's say at a point, you say, well, we'd like to turn these in early, but we're going to re-up with the same company, you know, if it's Apple again, you know, that might be a situation where they'd be willing to work with you, and if they know that you're basically just kind of re-upping a different kind of lease for a few years. But again, that's an idea I would have, and my sense would be that would be a win-win for them, but I don't have that specific answer tonight. I can answer lots of questions, that one I can't.
Anything else?
I would speculate that we're far enough ahead on the curve that if we made that request, they'd be happy to accommodate it just simply to be able to demonstrate that they, the leasing organization is flexible.
I would hope so.
I think that would be the case.
Well, again, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Matt. And thanks to all your instructional staff and your, and your team.
And the community members who came to the, to the event. Appreciate that.
All right, Board members, we've had a discussion tonight and over the last several, last meeting and several presentations before that. We have a motion and a second on the table to approve, the motion is to approve Phase One of the Transformation Technology Plan, which includes implementation of a three-year lease for the iPads for the licensed staff for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. And the cost of the iPad lease is projected at forty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-one cents each year for the next three years. So you have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Resolution for establishing dates for filing affidavit of candidacy is our next item for individual action. And Board members, you have in your packet a sheet that describes the language, and you'll notice that what this does is, has a filing date of Tuesday, July thirty-first, two thousand twelve, and closing at five o'clock on Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. So is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Julie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann. Any questions or comments? Okay, this will have to be a roll call vote?
Correct.
Fosse?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinnell?
Aye.
And Iversa? Aye. Very good. Items in the consent grouping, so in our consent grouping, are there any items you wish to pull that, remember that we do have some additional personnel items that were in the table file. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel? Seconded by Ann? All those in favor of approving consent grouping, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, Board members, you had in your packets the end-of-the-year enrollment report, which is always good to see, includes all of our elementary, middle school, high school, and the area learning center, as well as, I'm sorry, the one for early childhood program. So, future meetings, Monday, July ninth, and then Monday, August thirteenth, well, into our summer. Have a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved by Jeff. Seconded by John. All those in favor?
Third.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.